First, I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded and broadcast on TV. Can I have a motion or for an approval of the October first minutes?
Also move.
Moved by Erickson.
Second.
Second by Spence. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any items to be added to the agenda by commission members or staff?
Just during our director's report.
At this time, we'll invite citizens to schedule a time with the commission agenda for an item not listed. A not listed time limited to five minutes per person to address the board. Seeing there's no one here.
One thing I did think of, Mr. Chair, um, we will have a presentation by first district at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Disclosure, does anybody have any conflicts, interest, relationships to any applicant ex parte communication tonight? Items number eight and nine have been withdrawn.
By the applicant.
By the applicant.
Will not be hearing.
And will not be heard.
This evening.
This evening. So with that being said, is there a motion for approval of agenda?
Need a motion.
Who had a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Klein John.
Oh.
That's where you threw me off. You're just fine.
Alrighty, did you get that?
All in favor of approval of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're acting as Brookings County Planning and Zoning Commission. I will now call this meeting into order. I would like to welcome those in attendance at tonight's meeting. The Brookings County Planning Commission is a nine-member commission whose function is to recommend approval and disapproval of land use plans, zoning ordinance, subdivisions, Platts amendments thereof to the Brookings County Commission. The commission makes its recommendation based upon the adapted comprehensive plan for the physical development of the unincorporated areas of Brookings County. As a matter of policy, all motions are made in the positive. After a motion is moved and seconded, it is open for debate. Those supporting the motion shall in turn give their reasons. Those opposing the motion shall then offer their reasons. After everyone has given, has been given a chance to be heard, the commission shall recommend approval or disapproval based on a testimony and information presented. A simple majority vote of a quorum of members of the planning and zoning board in attendance is required to forward the recommendation.
Mr. Ford, could you please pull your mic a little closer?
We can barely.
That's better.
Consideration of Platts, 2019 plat 019, plat of lot one of Thompson addition of the northwest one-fourth of section twenty-six, township one-eleven north, range fifty-one W of the fifth primorit in Brookings County, South Dakota. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by, motion by Klein John, second by Spence. Richard.
Yep, plat number twenty nineteen plat zero one nine, Susan and Robert Gamble are plating off four point nine eight acres that contain the homestead and the building site of the hundred and sixty acres they own. And the farm said we use the existing driveway located on two hundred and sixth street for access to the property. It meets the plotting requirements of the two thousand sixteen comprehensive plan for the unincorporate rural area land use on page twenty-four. Copy of the front page of the plat. This is the beacon map with the plat overlay. Two hundred and sixth street, this goes around the outside perimeter of the trees there. Just the beacon map without the, uh, the overlay on it. And that's all that I have.
Now we'll open it for discussion from the board. Pretty cut and dry. Open it to public portion of the hearing, anybody for it? Anybody against it? We will now close the public hearing. Back to the board for more discussion. Seeing no one, we'll call roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Klein John.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Jensen.
Yes.
And Ford.
Aye.
Motion passes.
The Board of Adjustment is a nine-member board which has the power to hear requests for variances, conditional uses, appeals, and special exceptions. The concurring vote of two-thirds of the attending members is necessary for approval of any action by the board. A nine-member board requires six volts, a six-member board requires six volts, votes. In accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, we require a motion to approve a request before the request can be debated. As a matter of policy, all motions are made within the positive. The board, under specific powers granted by the state, shall authorize variances from the zoning requirements where special conditions existing on the land will result in unnecessary hardship for the applicant. Financial disadvantage to the property owner shall not constitute proof of an unnecessary hardship. Revoked conditional use permit to zero one three CU zero zero seven issued to Brent Thompson and approved on July second, two thousand thirteen. Article eleven, section ten, section eleven dot zero one, agriculture district conditional use number eleven, class A, B, C, and D concentrating, concentrated animal feeding operation. The property is described as S thirteen-ten of E five-fifty and S four-eighty-point-five of E nine-seventy excess of E five-fifty and excess of highway in southeast one-fourth of section twenty-eight. Township one oh-nine north, range fifty-one W, Parnell Township. Two-one-eight-eight-three, South Dakota Highway thirteen, Elkton, South Dakota, five-seven-zero-two-six is the address. Roll, range forty-eight W. Parnell Township, my bad. A motion and a second on that, please.
It's all moved.
Motion by Davis.
Second.
Second by Bartley.
Yes, conditional use.
Yes, conditional use, two thousand thirteen CU zero zero seven. Brent Thompson had applied for a conditional use for number eleven for a class A, B, C, and D concentrated animal feeding operation for the expansion of his permitted class C CAFO which was approved on two thousand, June fifth, two thousand twelve, and was conditional use permit two thousand twelve CU zero zero five to expand to a class B CAFO for eighteen hundred head of beef cattle. Brookings County Conditional Use Permit, two thousand thirteen CU zero zero seven was approved on July second, two thousand thirteen, and one of the conditions of the permit was that Mr. Thompson needed to get a state CAFO permit from the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources. Mr. Thompson has decided not to pursue his expansion to a class B CAFO for beef cattle, and South Dakota DNRs returned his application that he had originally submitted for the expansion for the class B. This is a public hearing only for the revoking of the Conditional Use Permit, two thousand thirteen CU zero zero seven for his expansion from a class C to a class B CAFO for beef cattle. And he can continue to operate his permitted class C CAFO Conditional Use Permit, two thousand twelve CU zero zero five for up to nine hundred ninety-nine head of beef cattle. Public notices were published in the Brookings Register on October twenty-second and twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, and in the Elkton Record on October twenty-fourth and thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Letters were sent to the joining landowners, the Parnell Township Chairman and Clerk, Brookings County Highway Department, and the South Dakota Department of Transportation. This is a copy of his Conditional Use Permit, expansion from a C to a B. Filed May ninth, or applied for May ninth, two thousand thirteen. Approved on July second, two thousand thirteen. Signed off by the Chairman of the Brookings County Planning and Zoning Commission, Jeff Robbins. Just a beacon map of the location of the operation. And that's all that I have. So this is just a revoking of the class two thousand thirteen Conditional Use Zero Zero Seven for Clay's class B expansion. He can continue to operate as class C up to nine hundred ninety-nine head. And that's all that I have. Yep, go through the same.
Is there any discussion from the board? We'll open up the public portion of the hearing. Is there anybody for this? Seeing none, is there anybody against it? Okay, we'll now close the public portion of the hearing. Back to the board for any more discussion. Pretty cut and dry. Now, Richard, if you call the roll.
Davis.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Klein John.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Spence.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Bartley.
Aye.
And Ford.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Department reports, do you have anything?
Um, we can do those after Luke's presentation if you'd like, or?
Sure, that's fine.
This time, being the absent of the two conditional uses, um, we'll have just a short training session from, from Luke on whatever topic he would like to address the zoning board on.
Alright, I was, uh, Luke Muller, First District Association of Local Governments, for those of you watching at home. Um, I was given a, uh, a suggestion to perform a training with you guys this, uh, uh, this evening with relatively short notice. I won't say how short, but and it went through a couple of them. I've got, thankfully, I've got several of them. I've done a few with you in the past and done a few at county commissioners and was about to leave with a few of them and had, um, a couple of things I had to deal with on appeals. As I walked out the door, the boss asked me what I was going to do, Todd, that is, uh, the work boss, and he said, I told him what I was gonna do. He said, why on earth wouldn't you tell them about what you're going through in Cottonton County right now? And so, actually, I think that's a good idea, and that'll be a little more relatable to you as well, especially probably to Richard as well. But I'm gonna do this more as a, um, it'd be a little bit more of a hypothetical. I can talk about specifically what's happening. But what I'm gonna talk to you about today is appeals. Uh, you lived an appeal of a decision of a zoning officer about a year ago, plus or minus. Uh, board members, you'll recall you had, um, two gravel companies in here appealing a decision to, if I recall, to revoke or not revoke a permit, or say it's active or inactive. Uh, and then to, uh, consider that, and that was, I'm sure, a lot of fun. It was not something you go through a lot. Um, and there are a lot of things that are different about that, so I'm, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna work my way up to that point, because that's about where we're at. And I'll be honest, I'm using a lot of how Brookings County handled it. Um, pros and cons as the template as far as how we're handling it, and about three, three other counties. There's two right now. There'll be a third here very soon. Um, and so I'm gonna go, I'm gonna start by asking a little bit of a question. I'm gonna paint a story for you, okay? Let's say that you issued a, uh, and I'm more gonna ask you questions and your thoughts, and I, this is more meant to be a kind of a group discussion, or how, how would you handle it, or how would you expect your zoning officer to handle that situation? Um, imagine that you issued a conditional use permit for a, uh, concentrate animal feeding operation, twenty-six hundred animal units to two brothers. Um, the brothers got the permit, of course. You said that they have to do several things. They need to get a haul road agreement. They need to have a manure management plan. They need to follow a nutrient management plan. They have to get a state general permit as well. They go through, of course, there was a full room when you had your hearing. Uh, then they go out to peer and they get their state general permit, but in the meantime, one of the brothers decides, I don't need this. I'm just not gonna do it. And so, the other brother says, well, I'm fine doing it, uh, but I can't do all of this. I'm gonna do twenty-one hundred, not twenty-six hundred head, uh, or animal units. And then, they go out, peer, they get the permit and peer for twenty-one hundred animal units. Your permit was transferable, because that's how you generally do things. The letter of assurance was signed by that particular brother on that case. And then he comes in to get a building permit. He provides you the state general permit. Um, he provides you the, um, all the management plans and has done, fulfilled all the other conditions. Do you see any reason why not to issue that permit?
Would it be any different than selling a permitted piece of land?
I don't think so.
That's happened here, and it was never a problem.
That's anybody else? And I'm, this is more me commiserating with you a little bit, but in all honesty, I any the, um, that's the way I see it too, is it's transferable. We signed, we said it's transferable. That's the case. In that particular, in this particular case, the, um, the one brother came off, that's no different than, than if you had a trust and they changed the trust into just a single ownership of it. Or that, it's kind of the same thing. It's two different entities going through it. I guess that's how I see it. I well, um, there are attorneys that don't agree with that, surprise, surprise. Um, we received a stop order, and I will point out, this is not on a feedlot. Shockingly enough, we have, um, I, I know I've told you that, and I guess shockingly with electricity is probably the right thing to say, but wind generation, for whatever reason, north of the Hyde Wood Valley has not been well received. And, uh, there's been question on, on whether or not, um, well, basically what happened was, uh, the order was to stop a permit on it because of a similar instance like that. One entity decided they weren't going to be a part of it. Um, however, they were gonna do the, they were gonna do a downsized version of that same project. Um, zoning officers in both counties were issued a, uh, letter demanding that they issue a stop order because the permit said it should become effective based upon the two entities getting the all applicable permits from the state and federal government. In both cases, the counties have said they did obtain all applicable permits. And the, um, the argument against is that no, only one of them did. And so, what's being appealed in both of those cases is the, uh, decision of the zoning officer to not issue a stop order on any work being done and furtherance of that, because the building permits had been issued, and, and the question was. The way that they went about it was very interesting, and that's why I'm gonna more talk about it here, because it's kind of process, and I'm sorry, nuts and bolts is kind of my thing, though, on this sort of thing. The way that it started was that they issued that, that letter to the zoning officer saying, hey, you need to issue a stop order. Zoning officer, and I'm sorry to speak in the third person, but I probably should, the zoning officer essentially said, nah-uh. And sent a letter back saying they got all of their, they get all of the permits, and therefore, the permits were, the building permits were issued, and, and no, I'm not issuing a stop order. The, uh, the, uh, complainant or appellant decided that, um, the zoning officer doesn't know what they're talking about, and took that case to the county commissioners. And said, county commissioners, you need to stop this. Now, I ask you, do any of you yes or no, how many think the county commissioners can override the decision of the, of the Board of Adjustment?
Hopefully none.
Nope. The Board of Adjustment decision is final. Board of Adjustment's the judge in that matter. Only be taken as appellate. County commissioners are out of it. They set the rules, they appoint you, they don't like what you're doing, they kick you off, they go find someone else. They don't like the rules you're enforcing, they change the rules with your suggestion. That's how it works. And so, there is a small section that says that if you're a zoning board, and it's, I'm paraphrasing here, and of course, this is my own interpretation, please don't take this as a legal interpretation, but this is just me regurgitating what I've heard from other attorneys that say that, um, if you've got a rogue zoning board who's doing nothing that is in compliance with what the, uh, with what the ordinance says, and they've, they line up a meeting a week in between times that the county commission can get together, they can hold an immediate, they can hold a meeting and, and file for an injunction to stop them from anything they're doing. That's taking to the nth degree, that's basically what it was, and that's what the appeal was in that case, or at least what they were arguing. Both county commissions said, n-no, this, one, this was litigated already, two, no, we're not doing that. So, the backtrack system has been to now file an appeal. Well, in the meantime, there's another issue that comes up. Um, you recall that at each of your meetings, you have the ability to have an open item, correct? Not only the ability, but you the requirement to have an open item if someone wants to address the board for a few minutes at the end of the meeting. You have always done this in Brookings County to have them do that. That's a new thing, though. State law mandated that sort of thing. Your policy is basically the framework that we've used in a lot of the counties to say, show up at the beginning, tell us what you're gonna say, wait till the end, come tell us the thing you needed to tell us. We'll give you five minutes. We can look at you blankly. We can say, hmm, good idea, maybe we'll think about that. Or we can engage in a discussion. We really have no obligation in that matter. Well, on that open item, what we had was, uh, had, uh, the appellant at that point had not appealed to the Board of Adjustment on any decision that the zoning officer had made, which, by the way, there is no timeframe after that decision to not issue, in this case, a stop order. Um, to make an appeal, they can do it at any time. It's thirty days, thirty years, they can make an appeal. They asked for time on the open. And what they did is they brought to the board, seeking the board to stop the project, on the open, five complaints. Of which one of those was the one that they had filed to the zoning officer. So I want you to think about this now. You are the judge, potentially, on an appeal that someone just showed up and gave you all the information on, of how they feel about things. Particularly an appeal that's going to be filed and is required to be argued with both sides present, and now you've heard information without being, without notifying the other entity. In that case, in both of the counties, they did, they did humor them and allow them to speak and just sit down and not engage in it. Um, and if, speaking with legal counsel, that was probably the right thing to do, however, in the future, um, I've been instructed that that should be shut off immediately because of the fact that if it's something on a complaint, the proper way to handle a complaint, and yours, your ordinance is the same way, where all the questions first come to the zoning officer. The zoning officer is the one who makes the determination. There should not be an open item where someone comes in and says, Board of Adjustment, what do you think about? Um, I was gonna say something about gravel pits. We'll, we'll avoid gravel pits for tonight. What do you think about the ability to spread manure within fourteen feet of a property line? I got a neighbor who's spreading manure within fourteen feet of the property line, and, and that's too close, and his permit, his permit said that he would avoid doing it. And he's doing it fourteen feet from property line on Memorial Day. His permit says that he'll try his best to avoid spreading manure in a manner that would be detrimental, and it was also humid. Well, that's something that could potentially come to you on an appeal. Because, again, part of the permit in some of those cases say that they will avoid spreading on hot and humid days, and they'll avoid on holidays and weekends. So again, it's one of those that you try not to engage in that, because that could be a potential appeal. So it's kind of my way of, of saying, when you're the board chair, what have you, and you've got an open item, there is, there is one thing that's not open. You are still a court. If it's something that could potentially be a determination or a, I need to investigate, immediately stop them and say, if this is a complaint about someone, I need you to forward it to the zoning office. Let them review it. And if you're not happy with the decision they make, you can always appeal their decision. And that's it. Because at that point, then they can appeal, and that's the process.
Couple of questions, Luke.
Yeah.
If we're you're talking about a Board of Adjustment or a planning zoning issue?
Uh, Board of Adjustment, Board of Adjustment.
Board of Adjustment, are, are we allowing open comments on Board of Adjustment or only Planning Commission? Because I think our open comments are basically on Planning Commission, so we wouldn't allow open comments on, on conditional uses.
But do you do
Board of Adjustment.
But do you adjourn in between?
Technically, technically, we should be adjourning before we start our Board of Adjustment. We're not doing that.
One of the things that we've done, which I don't, I do and I don't like in this particular instance, and I hadn't run into a case of where this was a problem until two weeks ago, um, the way that I run these agendas now is all stars is a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment. And then, once we've done, um, disclosure, public, disclosure of conflicts of interest, approval of the minutes, set your time to speak on the open, and then, uh, once we do that, then we recess as one of them and say, now we are only meeting as this entity. And then, once we've finished with that entity, then we recess as that en- entity, reconvene as this one. And then, once we're done with, with that business, if we have something that needs to be, that got kicked down to the bottom, say an executive session, or, um, or there's someone that does want to address the board, then we, then we reconvene jointly, finish up. It's a pain, but honestly, it keeps it from having to adjourn. The main reason we do it that way is we don't want to do two separate sets of minutes. The main reason we do it that way is we don't wanna do two separate sets of minutes.
You know, if you stay, if you look at some of the state laws that in regards to hearing, public hearings and, uh, which are appeals in most cases on, on, on some sort of a decision. You have to be extremely careful that you're not taking that open comment from a one position
Yeah.
of the argument. Because it then, because you're the jury and the judge, you've now been tainted.
Yes.
So anytime we hear that testimony, we sit up here and we don't have the opposition's testimony, we have now been tainted. And then the courts will look at that and say, but you were, you, you took that testimony without the rebuttal process, be, without a fair process, so you're tainted jury and we're gonna throw it all out. You're gonna start all over. So you gotta be, uh, uh, and that's in state law, the public hearing process on, now this isn't the public hearing process, but it's, it has a lot of similarities. You have to be careful that you don't taint us as the, the judge and the jury. Especially in board of adjustment.
That might be true, but that, it's just starting to make life so stupid.
I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you.
There's, and, and I'm, I'll finish, I'm gonna take this whole thing to an arc. Um, but I'll, I'll spare you a little bit of it. There is, there was an update to state law. It was handled by Public Assurance Alliance and some, well, let's put it this way, some attorneys that represent, uh, counties that wanted to make it clear that quasi judicial boards such as a board of adjustment are not expected to operate exactly as a judge would. Basically, what it does is it gives them the benefit of the doubt. Um, I don't say that very loud because I want you to do your best not to do, get yourself in those positions. But it does give you the benefit of the doubt, and every now and then, uh, you'll have in, in some of your defense, you'll have your attorneys will, will pull that section of state law out and say, listen, yes, they did not allow cross-examination because they don't have to, they don't have to run it like a court. Or they're not expected to be someone who has their, has a, is a member of the state bar and knows exactly how to do this. They're, they're a layboard. You know, so it, you do have a little leeway, but I would not want to have to rely on it because that really depends on how compelling the argument is with the attorney. And so going back to this particular instance, in running how this is going to wind up going on now, we've got a single appeal. We've got now, um, what was kicked over to the zoning officer was, okay, we'll have the zoning officer review that. Zoning officer has not reviewed things in the timeline that they wanted them, that, that the appellant's wanted it done. And so in both counties, there's been a request to, I went from a request to a demand actually, but either way, um, it was a, uh, a request for board action considering, um, the violations of this applicant on these five counts. The, the problem is that if you look at your, and this, this is all coming in a correspondence with these people. So it's, I'm not really speaking out of term because I've spoken with my attorneys on this, but there are only three avenues that something comes to the board, plus, uh, to the board of adjustment, plus the open item. There's variances, there is, there are, sorry, sorry, Mrs. Wigletner. Um, there are, um, variances, conditional uses, and appeals to the decision of the zoning officer. Well, clearly, the one on the stop order is an appeal to decision of a zoning officer. That's, that's fine, that can go. Um, however, you, you're not allowed to just take that question to the board. That's not an avenue that you can take. One, you're making an assumption about what the zoning officer is doing. Now, on the other hand, the fact that building permits were issued, y, you can appeal the interpretation on that. That's not what's being appealed. It's a couple of other points in it. However, uh, you don't, you as a, someone as a complainer doesn't have the ability to just compel something to be on the, on the, uh, agenda. It's just like going straight to a, a judge and saying, hey, judge, you need to, you need to rule on this. Oh, no, that's not exactly the case. And so there's only three routes that they can go. So that's not gonna be well received. It hasn't been told yet. Um, but the bottom line is, is that, is that that winds up being a case where a decision has to be made by the zoning officer. Then they have the ability to appeal and so on. The, uh, the next logical question, and I'm, I, I could go on, and I'm obviously droning on on this, but I'm betting it feels somewhat interesting to hear someone else going through pain and not just you guys. But the, uh, I'd lost that train of thought, but we'll just finish. In handling the hearing itself, the template for how to handle a hearing is gonna be largely how you handled it at, at this board when you had the, uh, the appeal here. Couple of things to keep in mind, however, are that, um, according to our, uh, legal counsel, this is a hearing different than other public hearings that you have. You do have to notice that there will be a, a public hearing, but it's not, it's not a public hearing where you offer anyone in the audience wanna come and speak. It's not that sort of thing. It's a hearing in the public. It's a hearing between two entities going to argue their points as to why they think they're right. And you as the board are going to act as the judge. And you're gonna decide whether or not you agree or disagree with the interpretation that the zoning officer made. In the case of, of my particular instance, I've said several times, I'm basically gonna sit in the audience and, uh, sit there, be quiet and look pretty. That's about all I'm gonna try and do. I don't know how on earth I'm gonna do any of those things, but I'm gonna do the best I can not to talk and, uh, sit there, but the, uh, the bottom line is that, um, they'll have both sides discuss and then the board will make a decision. It takes five, or, uh, sorry, it takes, uh, two thirds majority of the full membership of the board to override the decision of the zoning officer. And so what it means is that in the case of Brookings County, if only seven of you are here, I guess six out of seven have to vote, yeah, vote to override the decision of the zoning officer. Unless the zoning officer is, is completely wrong, or there's been something completely, uh, wrong pointed out, a lot of times the, the main thing that can really trip up this instance is just the motion itself. Because what you have is an appeal, and don't forget, in all, most of our bylaws, the, uh, we require a motion, a motion to approve the applicant's request. So immediately you have a motion to approve the appeal. So you are immediately making the motion to disagree with your zoning officer is what's happening. So in those cases, it's important before on an appeal, and honestly, this is probably a good idea as you go forward on any of them. I was thinking about that during the revocation to make sure that you were clear on what you're voting on. Never be afraid to just call a point of order and just restate what the motion is. A yes vote means what, a no vote means what. Even if you are clear, it's, it's a good idea to do that. I'm really going to recommend to our, um, to our state's attorney to do that as well as they're going through and officiating this because uh, nothing's really more frustrating than, there's two things that are frustrating. One is where someone, uh, thought they're voting one way and then, yeah, but their decision actually voted the other way. The other thing that's frustrating is for the folks in the audience who then hear you say, no, no, that's not what I meant. That's even more frustrating because then, then it's like an umpire changing their mind. It makes the, makes the other manager really upset. So knowing ahead of time, ask that question, and that's the point that we're gonna make there. So in the end, uh, the, the last point that I'll make is more of an overarching point. What we're seeing in this particular case is involves wind. This is, we talked about this at a planner's conference about eight years ago. And I really was hoping that this wasn't actually going to happen. But there was a discussion, I won't get into what it was about, but we talked about how one particular initiative that had garnered a little bit of discussion on some talk radio shows. And some talking heads started to be blogged about, and it started to have people talking about it on the internet. And pretty soon, that topic came to South Dakota. And those questions and those arguments, despite the fact that, um, they had been debunked, argued against, and, uh, clearly refuted, and even uh, some of the people who made the comments had changed their mind on them, but it was on the internet. People had a degree in Google, they found it, they brought it to your, to your meeting and, uh, said, well, here you go, you can't possibly approve because of this. Well, we have now some organizations that are nationwide. Um, there are, uh, in, in this particular case, uh, there's been coordinated what amounts to appeals on, on certain types of projects, in this case, wind across the country. At the same time of year, November, in order to try to stop, uh, wind farms from starting um, operations before the end of the year to claim their tax credit. Whether you agree or disagree with the tax credit or what have you, um, largely what we have is a coordinated, uh, coordinated plan. Now, whether it's, and, and that's, that's, um, whether the entity in, in our county is a part of that or not, I don't know, but there are appeals in four different counties in South Dakota, or at least using the same manner to go there. Um, I know that in a, I know in Michigan, they're having the same thing going on. Um, and there is very similar discussion being held, the same manner, same questions, that sort of thing. And really, honestly, that's not a concern as far as people can do what they wanna do. Appeal, don't appeal, I, that really doesn't matter because that's their right. That's what, that's how our whole system is set up. Appeal the decisions, don't appeal the decisions. The point I wanna make to you is a decision that's made in Massachusetts, or Michigan, or Missouri, or Tennessee can affect what's happening here. And so just be aware that, that there are, there are certain issues that you're going to have. There are certain, um, appeals that you're going to see or different arguments against things, or for things for that matter. May have absolutely no bearing in your county at all, or frankly, in our state. But it's, we're having organized groups, and I, we saw this with, with feedlots here a few years ago. Um, we're seeing it with energy development. In some cases, telecommunications towers, we'll be seeing it, and, and honestly, mining uh, out west, we've seen that. And in some cases here, though, I think that's probably more a local, local issue here. But bottom line is, things are going on around the country, um, and, uh, we're not as isolated as we used to be. Is what it amounts to. Probably the main thing that I would point out with that, and the main thing I can really suggest to help that is, um, again, if people wanna make appeals and, and appeal decisions, you know, that's fine. If they wanna speak out against a use, that's fine. You just wanna do it in a fair manner. Have a, have a system set up in order to do so. My suggestion is usually on, specifically on written comment to have a deadline for written comment, because there will be times where you will get flopped on your desk anywhere from ten to ten thousand pages that were downloaded off the internet. And in many cases, they reference completely different counties and make no mention of the application that's in your, that's before you. And so my suggestion to you is to have them, I do love how your county handles things, though, that as soon as you get something written, you put it on the website. I will tell you that the first time I started doing that in Kynan County, um, I noted to the individual, I said, I need you to put your name on this so that, because when I put it on the website, I wanna be able to attribute it to you. He said, oh, this is going on the website? And he pulled it back, he said, use this one. And so the public persona is a big deal too. So that was, that's just a story time with Luke, is about all it is. You have any questions about how anyone else is handling X, Y, Z, uh, anything out there? Maybe you heard a topic somewhere was a problem. I'm sure that, um, you don't really wanna go out there and shovel snow that bad, so if, I know you're not gonna, I know you're not gonna knock the snow off the ears of corn right now, so. Any questions of me, just random?
If you run into a, uh, situation where, say, a dairy or CAFO was permitted, say, ten years ago. And there is a haul road agreement drawn up between the individual and the township. And since then, the dairies expanded. They've acquired a lot more roads that they're using. Uh, the township has gotten to where they can't nowhere take care of the roads over and above the ones that were agreed upon. Is there, what course does the township have to take to try and get a new, some type of a haul road agreement or revise it or?
That's a good question. Um, have I run into it? I haven't had anyone ask me directly. Um, I feel like that's, that's what's happening here, but I, I would say, the first thing I'll say is on the front end. And this is something we learn as we go through these things. Is that, and I would advise us more of the townships themselves, as they, as they write them, um, to have, to have something in there that says that annually we, we review this and reassess the haul roads as they come in. That's the first thing. Now, that's, that's if the ship hasn't sailed already. That's on the new ones. That's what I would suggest is to go in and, and revise, not necessarily the parameters. But, okay, you're gonna be doing this because we all know the fields change and that sort of thing. That's kind of why I did it. The other thing I'll tell you, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna avoid that question for a second, the other thing I'll tell you that I've been telling applicants all over the state or the northeast is that uh, as a feedlot operator, I suggest, I don't ever put this into the conditions of the letter of assurance, but I always suggest notify your township when you're hauling. When you're, when you're chopping silage and when you're hauling manure, notify somebody with the township. Because even though everybody drives on the road, everybody knows the one that's got the big thing that is, that is apt to cause a problem, and despite the fact that they're only chopping silage for ten days, guess who gets labeled with the one that tore up the road, you know, fifteen days later? So that's one of the things I tell people, just to work it out. That way they can keep them in touch. Now, in the case like, like you're looking at, I would say that they're still bound. The township's under no, without, and keep in mind, this is, this is not legal advice. You're probably better off talking to J. Libel about specifics on that, but the, the township is not necessarily bound to provide a different level of service on that road than they would any other road. I think that what they need to do is be able to document what they are doing in other roads so that they can prove, you know, listen, we're doing the same thing we would do everywhere else. This road's garbage and, and you're the one that's causing it. We don't have any of those problems. There are rules, there are rules in state law that says that they can't destroy a road. Um, but I would, I would say that that's probably using recourse that is, that is within state law. It's probably the best route to point out, we're not doing anything else. We're not obligated to do anything else. And if there's a way to to show that they have been the ones causing the problem, then I think that you can either go down a road of saying, well, we're gonna prosecute you, or, or you're going to amend your haul road agreement to include this road now that's there. That's probably it, but if you don't have that hammer on some sort of prosecution, I really don't think there is much. And then, coming back to the county on it, um, I would say that the county probably the county had their bite at the apple. I'm sorry to say it, I mean, but that's what it is, is that county had the bite at the apple when it came in or on the time of the amendment. Um, the one thing that I would say is that if, if you see that as a concern as a board, you could add that as a condition that it's, um, that it's at least reviewed on an annual basis. I wouldn't say that you wanna make it so that it's gotta, that it basically goes away after a year, but at least it's reviewed. Because a review is, a review is just, hey, we're gonna look at it. That's all you're obligating them to do is sit down and, we're just obligating you to sit in the Because a review is, a review is just, hey, we're gonna look at it, that's all you're obligating them to do is sit down and we're just obligating you to sit in the same room, you don't have to get along. We're obligating you to sit in the same room or at least send it back and forth. Once. I, I wouldn't put it in that it's gotta be renewed or updated every year because then you do run into. Sure, I might get along great with the township today, but you know. My cousin who, who's never liked me and now he's on the board and plus it's. An ex-girlfriend's husband now or something like that and now I'm SOL, so. Sorry, I don't have a good an, I don't, I don't have the answer you're looking for, but no.
Part of the state, not part of the states?
General permit? No, the state, the state steers away from hall roads and setbacks. The only thing they apply setbacks to is where you're spreading your manure.
Okay.
So those are, that's basically what the state stays away from and that's when it comes right down to it. Is we talked about and I'll go to that subcommittee when we started, what, three, four, or five years ago, whatever it was, when we were working on our zoning ordinance, talking about. Removing some of the duplicitous processes that the state already handles and really focus like a laser beam on the things that. You actually do have. The main say so on, which again is, is um. Is more about uh, requiring some sort of a hall road or expecting some sort of hall road. Minimum expectations there and then also setbacks from certain things.
I know that's one of the things that we were duds. When it comes down to that, we were, we were duds at the beginning. So we've done that to, to that one and to some others as well. Uh, we should have done better.
I'll give you an example, I mean, in, in this, for what it's worth, and I know it doesn't make you feel better on those, but. I hate to say it, but that is how you learn.
Yeah, I know.
Sorry, I mean.
I know.
We've got a, I'll give you a good example in, in. In Cottington County. We have a uh, a repair shop. That taught us that we have to have conditions on things. The thing that taught Cottington County that they have to put conditions on conditional use permits was a repair shop. Cause they'd never put a condition on how many vehicles he could have outside at a time. And if he could stack them three on top of each other, he would. It is, it's, it's made it to a point that. That one was issued in nineteen ninety-six and Kynan County just issued its first repair shop permit. Two months ago. Because they've been so leery about it and the condition. You get, you get five cars outside. The one that's out there has right around sixty right now with no fence. And again, it was. Permit issued, no conditions. And so it's one of those things, I mean, you're, you're doing the best you can up there, yeah, but that's how you learn them too, I'm sorry to say.
Are there any templates for hall road agreements that could be looked at?
Yeah.
Looks to me like there should be some, some templates out there that.
There are um.
Could be used.
We've got many of them. One of the things that we've done, and I know that historically Brookings County's kind of stayed out of this. Excuse me, um, just kind of left it up, have townships and applicant work together. One of the things that we've seen in, in some other counties is to basically adopt. Here's what we're willing to accept. If you can come to an agreement, because there are times where you just flat, you, you can't come to an agreement. And uh, I, I know to a degree the townships don't necessarily like it. In the aspect that um, we're just kind of saying, well. This is, this is it, if you can, if you can live with that, great, if you can convince each other to work more, that's it, but. And what it amounts to is that. You gotta, you gotta operate according to the state law, if you ruin the road, you buy it. The township is expected to maintain their regular maintenance, anything above and beyond what would be regular maintenance is on the applicant. To determine whether or not something is needed on that. Is under the purview of the township. Township has say so if, if the road is in tough shape, not the applicant. Is what it amounts to, so some, it's a little give and take because it. It does put it back on, listen, you, you're allowed to do this. But it does put it on the township that this is, it, this is not acceptable, you need to do this. It also says that um, it's essentially done as either. The, the. Applicant is responsible for. The work to be done, be that financially or to do it themselves, however, if they do it themselves, they have to display that they've got insurance and liability and that sort of thing. Clearly, we'd all rather that the town, that, that they don't do it on their own and they have the township do it, or they reimburse the township for it, but. I mean, if, if they can go ahead and do it, cause there are some that actually have all the equipment, honestly. You know, as well as I do, there are some feedlots that actually have better equipment than the townships do have access to. And so from that respect, it would be fine as long as they've got the liability insurance and they're gonna prove that it's done in the way. Basically to a point of when they do it that way, then the township comes out and takes a look at it. To say that, yep, it's fine or no, that's unacceptable, but it takes more, it, it puts more onus on the township when that does happen and I do get that, but.
We had a case just two weeks ago when we were cutting silage ourselves. I scraped the road after every load, left the field. And we left, it was on a county tar road or asphalt road and we left just a little skim. Of dirt, cause you can't get it all off of there with a box scraper. And, and then two days later, we got just a. Touch of rain during the night. It made that road just like ice.
Yeah.
The school bus, our own feed truck and seven cars almost lost it. So I, I'm, my suggestion is now on, on road agreements that when they start hauling, they notify us. And they're required to put up signs on each end of. Where the dirt comes off of the trucks or the wagons or whatever.
To sign it?
And the county. Brookings County's highway superintendent came out and looked at it that morning when I was. After I noticed, was notified that it was slippery, I took the box scraper back up there again, but I couldn't get any more off. And they brought, they brought some signs out.
Did they?
It was kind of like the perfect storm, but the proper authorities were notified, it was a notice went out on the radio stations with, within an hour or two of the incident and.
That's.
You know, you just gotta deal with it as it happens and, and that's a. That happens every year, but this time it was slippery. It just, it was a perfect storm for that accident to happen, but we can't, we've had accidents all over town today because of the snow and the ice. You can't get this all out fast enough when it happens, so.
But this was just over the crest of a hill.
Yeah.
You know, so the cars are coming fifty-five miles an hour. And all of a sudden, they're just on glass.
That sort of thing could happen as you pull out in the spring after disken.
Yeah.
Or something like that too, I would imagine and.
Yeah, there's lots of cases that portend different things can happen, not just two or three events a year, but. You look out over the course of the year, the same thing can happen, so. And that, that's. That's a discussion for another date and time from this board, so.
That's where the. That's where the statement came from, that they put in the paper and on the radio and everything because of our situation.
Well, it made it up to, it made it up to Kynan County, we had the same, we had it be told up there too. And we actually were struggling with wind towers being constructed and, yeah, it's a mess up there, so yeah, that was, that was a timely deal up there too.
Anything else? We've kept Luke. Past a half hour, is that about forty-five minutes for now, so?
No, this is a, a discussion we had, that's why we were late coming in the door here, we've got a meeting that Luke wants to put on December third. Uh, for a joint session with the city planning commission and the county planning commission. The request was to maybe move that meeting to five thirty that day, that's also the egg banquet night.
Right, I was gonna bring that up here.
And I, I do have to speak at that. So, I mean, that's not a big deal, but how many of you go to the egg banquet?
This, this would be for our de, regular December third meeting on Tuesday, is the same night as a chamber commerce egg banquet.
Egg appreciation banquet.
Egg appreciation banquet. How many members were here, how many go to that?
I know I'll, I know I'll be invited.
Yeah, so you and I for sure, but I mean, whether you have a quorum or not, I guess, is the important part of it.
That's, that's what we're gonna see, we've got maybe four here right now that might go, so that alleviates our quorum. So, how about meeting Monday night on the second? At seven o'clock. And that would be a joint meeting, we're gonna have a joint meeting regardless because we're gonna have a, we have a rezoning coming up within the joint area. And we're also gonna be discussing the joint jurisdiction ordinance revision process that we will. Send out the packets to you this week for you to review and kind of start looking at it. And then Luke's gonna give a presentation on that date.
Did you say you've already got a hearing scheduled for that Monday?
Yes.
Anyway?
No, we have for that meeting.
For that, for the December meeting, we have a joint jurisdiction meeting scheduled.
Oh, I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying.
Already for a rezoning in the joint jurisdiction area.
Yeah, I gotcha.
So.
So do you have enough time to get that advertised?
Oh yeah, we got a whole month to advertise it.
A month to advertise it, it's not a problem. Does the city agree already or have you talked to them?
Yeah, yep, that's whatever date, I just talked with Mike Struck this evening and that's where the Monday night come up as. If, if, if you're available to meet Monday night, we will probably meet Monday night instead of Tuesday in a joint meeting. Probably at six, at seven o'clock, maybe six thirty. But if that's, that's what we'll go with, then we'll go with having our December meeting on Monday, the second.
That work for you, Luke?
I was just about to say, my, my only thing that I was gonna tell you is I'm probably not coming back two nights in a row, so.
Yeah. We would not have another meeting on Tuesday, that would be our regular monthly meeting on Monday.
Yeah, that, my schedule. My knowledge, that should be fine for me too.
Okay. We'll, we'll plan on that tentatively right now, our regular meeting will be on Monday, the second. Here and.
And I'll just, I'll point out that first meeting will be um, it'll be a little bit of a primer to get your. Get your minds going about what exactly is joint jurisdiction. And then it'll be just a brief, what was in the old one. Hitting, more or less just summarizing what, what the new one looks like. And maybe hitting probably the four or five. Main changes, I had someone mention, wow, there were a lot of changes, yet there, there were. But from a standpoint of what was changed, it was more along the lines of. The ordinance changed to be done the way that you've been handling it. Largely, cause there were parts within the ordinance that may not necessarily have been done the same way as, as the ordinance itself was listed. Now, there are changes though. From the way you have handled it and the way it was listed in the ordinance, so. Those are the ones I'm probably gonna focus on saying, you probably wanna look at this section, this section, this section, this section. Cause these are the ones I expect you to probably have concerns, I'm not saying don't look at the rest of it, I'm, it's not a case of look at this hand while this hand does something. But I'll point out some of the main changes and then the last point we'll do at that meeting is going to be just kind of talk about. The, the schedule of what we're gonna try and do, of which I have no idea what that's gonna be quite yet. I'll figure it out.
After that, then it'll be work sessions, we'll schedule time to go over the joint. Jurisdiction proposed it at a work session during the, a meeting. We'll discuss that section by section, you can. Change it up if you want, you agree with, agree with it, fine, if you wanna make changes, fine, and from there it would go back to. Uh, subcommittee if there's any changes? Or would it just go through to the county commission then?
It would, it would likely go to public hearings and county commission.
Commission, okay.
What, what's gonna wind up happening is that there is a subcommittee put together, uh, they'll be notified. When, if there's a draft put together, sent out to them as well again and. Depending on what level, be it county commissioners, you, whoever wanna have them involved. Could be a case where those members come to the, to a public hearing and say, you know, I really don't want this, but bottom line is. Those members are going to be invited to our discussions anyway. Cause the idea is it's gonna be a lot of discussion with you and. If there's a what the heck were these people thinking, hopefully these people will be sitting in the audience to be able to answer that.
So that's a nut, a nutshell basically for that, Bob is at the um. Winter weather awareness meeting for new people to South Dakota that have not experienced winter weather before, so. He is educating them this evening on a night when there's snow, so.
To learn by doing tonight.
And um, uh, yeah, that's all that I have for, for right now, so.
If ever, if everyone would. Be okay, I'd like to share something about um, this from Brent Thompson, I, I know Darryl was a part of it. I don't know if, if you were where we first started. Where we first started with, with Brent Thompson. And uh. If you could look at that. That uh, first picture. How close he was to the, to the. To the water. Ground. Uh, how close he was to the wa, uh, how close the water was in the ground. And, and the people didn't want him to, to, to have. To build. Didn't wanna have us put. New water.
Yep, yeah, this, we should, you should have brought up Darryl during the um. That section of the, of the meeting, but. To discuss this part, but yeah.
We, at this point in time, we can't really discuss something that's been pulled off our agenda unless he comes back and.
Oh, I see.
Reapply, so otherwise we're again, we're tainting our, our opinion before.
I see.
He gets a chance to come and present his case, so I understand your concern, but I don't think we can discuss it this evening and because he pulled it.
I just wanted to share. How good. This went. So that's just what I wanted to share.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Motion adjourned.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Davis, second?
Second.
Second by Eric. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.